Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
All right, now we'll move on to rule call.
Councilmember Mizouni?
Here.
Councilmember Palphini?
Here.
Councilmember Vierasan?
Present.
Councilmember Wetstang?
Present.
Mayor Parham?
Present. All right, next is the acceptance of agenda and urgency items. We do have one urgency item to be added, and that is Resolution Number thirty dash twenty twenty five. And this has to do with the Public Works Bargain Group Electing Cease to be Subject to the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act with Respect to a Recognized Employee Organization. And the background on this is just that the employees who are represented by the Teamsters Union are requesting to remove themselves from the city medical and put themselves onto the Teamsters Medical, which needs to be conducted as business tonight. So with that, I will-
Just for the record, we learned about this after the agenda was posted, and it requires action by September fifteenth, I believe, so that would constitute grounds for an urgency item, provided there's a two-thirds majority vote by the council at this time to add it to the agenda. And it's up to you, Mayor, where you'd like to add it. Obviously, it should be after the MOU approval, so maybe-
I would like to add it under regular business, and we'll put it in as the last item so that we can discuss that before staff reports.
Great.
All right, I'll accept the motion to-
I'll make a motion to accept the emergency item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the urgency item is accepted as our last agenda item before staff reports. As far as the regular agenda acceptance, are there any items that council feels need to be moved or removed, tabled, or otherwise?
I move to accept the agenda as modified with the urgency item.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries to accept the agenda with inclusion of the urgency item. Now we'll move on to non-agenda public comment. This is a time for our public to comment on anything that is not currently on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Barbara Hagdal, and I'm a resident here in Weed. I'd like to get an update on the sale of the library building, and more importantly, what progress is being made to move the library to a new location?
All right. Well, what I can update you on for that is that the item from last month was to move to make that a surplus item. Does not mean that it's being sold at the moment. That is a requirement from the state of California before a building can be sold. Currently, there are no offers, and there is no escrow to sell the building or move the library at this time.
So again, is any progress being made to look at other locations for the library in case you do get an offer?
My understanding is that staff is looking for locations, but as there are no offers to purchase the building, we are not acting on any moves at this time.
Okay, I will be back next month to ask for status again.
Excellent, thank you. And I would encourage our few followers that follow us at home, and anybody else in the audience, to, you know, please come to meetings and, you know, share with us your concerns and your questions, and, you know, that's what we're here for. That's why it's a public forum. So I appreciate you coming tonight and look forward to seeing you in the future. All right, any other public comment this evening?
And then I just wanted to say before I started, it may go over a little bit over three minutes, and I was just requesting that time from you guys, if you would, please.
How long are you projecting the time would be?
Maybe like, maybe like forty seconds over three minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Not like boring you with ten minutes or longer, anything like that. No, no, no.
If it was twenty minutes, that'd be different, but, you know, a minute or so is fine.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Okay. Good evening, council members and community members. My name is Valerie. I am the sole owner and representative of the Weed Liquor Depot. First, I wanted to sincerely apologize for not attending the previous meeting. I was under the impression that I had to complete other steps before being placed on the agenda. And if I would have known that I was placed on the agenda, I would have made every effort to be here and to plead my case with you just on the other meeting on August fourteenth. The purpose of why I'm here tonight is to share why I believe my business should be reconsidered for the South Weed Business District. The purpose, while I may, while I have many reasons in support of this proposal, I focus on the main points in just consideration in respect of your time. Let me begin by telling you a little bit about myself. I'm a twenty-five-year-old entrepreneur. I am a local Realtor here in Weed at Siskiess Premier Realty. I was born and raised in Mount Chassa, and I currently live in Weed. I attended College of the Siskies, and I have a deep appreciation for my community. This is where I was raised, educated, and continue to grow both professionally and personally. I am proposing the addition of a liquor store at one seventy-five East Vista Drive in South Weed. The license I'm requesting to be transferred is a type twenty-one. This is a beer, wine, and distilled spirits retail license that is intended for off-site consumption. Currently, there's only one other type twenty-one license active in South Weed. However, that business does not sell wine, nor do they offer liquor in bottle sizes larger than three hundred and seventy-five milliliters. I brought with me today an example of that size, just for reference. It does not have any alcohol in it, just so you are aware. I, let's see. The selection is also very limited in this spot, and when it comes to variety and product range, they lack a lot of different options. I've spoken with many local residents, and there's a shared sense that this part of town lacks a well-rounded option for purchasing spirits, wine, and diverse beers. My proposed store would help meet that need and improve convenience for community members as well as travelers. There are also three type twenty-one, or three type twenty licenses in South Weed. Those are only for beer and wine sales. Those stores primarily focus on mass-marketed brands such as Coors, Corona, Bud, et cetera. I think my goal of my store is to focus more on locally-owned distilleries, locally-owned breweries, and small business owner, like, brands, giving them a platform to grow their business and to gain more visibility. In doing so, we also offer travelers a unique glimpse in the quality and creativity that exists in our region. Additionally, I'd love to feature local artisans and craftsmen, giving them a shelf space to display their work and helping connect talent with a broader audience. This business would not just be a liquor store, it would be a space that celebrates- It would be a space that celebrates and supports local culture. Finally, I want to talk about the positive impact this addition could have on our community as a whole. As someone who went through our local school systems, I've seen firsthand the challenges that they face, especially when it comes to funding. As a local business owner, I feel a strong responsibility to give back to the community that has shaped me into who I am today. Whether that's through sponsoring sports teams, making donations, or simply helping out where needed, I'm committed to making a positive impact through my success in this community. I also believe that supporting locally-owned businesses is key to inspiring future generations. It's important to show our youth that success can be built right from home. We don't need to leave our small communities in order to grow and become successful and make a difference. This business would also create job opportunities, generate additional tax revenue for the city of Weed, both of which directly support our community's growth and development. In closing, I respectfully ask the council to reconsider its decision. I hope you'll view my proposal through the lens of a fellow local business owner. Like many of you, I'm working hard to contribute positively to our community, and I'm asking for the opportunity to demonstrate that commitment. Not just for my own success, but to uplift other small businesses and to help our local communities thrive. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that the council or anyone may have regarding this matter, and if not, then thank you again, and I hope you all have a wonderful weekend.
All right. Thank you, Valerie. Council members, are there any discussion or comments on that?
You can make brief remarks or refer things to staff, but can't really engage in extended discussion since it's not agendized.
It's not agendized, so if we were to address this, we'd have to put it on the future.
Okay, no questions or anything? All right, staff? All right, well, thank you, Valerie, and that's something we'll have to consider for the next agenda.
Is it gonna be, okay, the next one or for today?
Well, it's something we'll have to discuss and consider with staff and, you know.
Okay, should I re-put in appeal for your guys' next meeting for that?
I'm gonna defer to Dustin and David on that one, because I'm not sure how that process works once it's been-
Because I really would love to answer any and all questions and concerns that you guys have.
That would be a council decision because it's not legally necessary, as based on David's guidance. And if not, you can come talk to me again.
Okay.
All right.
I will talk to you.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment tonight for non-agenda items? All right, seeing as there are none, we'll move on to council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments, and we'll begin with Councilmember Vierasan.
I had a great opportunity to go around south to participate in the longboat race with the Lao community, the Lao whatnot, in Merced, California. That was a huge blessing. We had about six thousand. We had about six thousand people, Laoian community showed up in Merced, so it was a huge success, and I want to congratulate the first-place winner for the, to put the longboat race. It's a tradition that we're trying to keep, so maybe next year, we can invite all the council, anyone that wants to join, to see how this process works. It's bringing tradition, our tradition preservation of the Lao culture is on the progress. I'm very proud of that, so thankful for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Mizouni?
Couple of quick, quick things. I had my LAFCO meeting, and I think I discussed last month about the cemeteries. We got more into it this week, and there's about nine to ten cemeteries that are not privately owned or taken care of. And there's a couple of them in there. There's an Asian, the Chinese, I didn't even know that was up here out of Waireka. The person that was talking, I don't remember her name right now, but they offered Waireka to take everything over on another one, and they're really underfunded on it. We, as Weed, we're, we're okay, we don't have anything going. So I think that it's gonna go to the Board of Supervisors for maybe consolidating all these different cemeteries and kind of go from there. So I'm gonna try to talk to a council person I know in there about, they, they had asked, they, this group said, we'll take Waireka's if they'll help fund it. So I'll kind of go through there and that, and that was it for that. It started off, and, you know, they thought it'd be another six-minute, but I got my mouth talking and asked a bunch of questions, and it came into a pretty good dialogue of what we want to try to complete here, and, you know, those, some of those cemeteries, they're historic, and you want to maintain them. You don't want to forget about them. So, and the other thing, I want to welcome Dustin in here. His first night here, and I think we all did a great job, and I count on him taking care of things, and I had a great meeting with him this morning. So I just want to tell you and your family, welcome to our community, and thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Same here.
Thank you. Councilmember Wetstang?
This is usually where I have David's head spin, but I wanted to say that I didn't attend any meetings on the expense of the local agency, but I have had the honor and privilege for the last couple of months in my position at the District Attorney's Office to deal with a concerning issue here in the city of Weed. And I'm happy tonight to announce that there is a memorandum of understanding between the District Attorney's Office and Roseburg Forest Products that they will, in fact, create a 501(c)(3) corporation that shall be called the Roseburg Forest Products Weed Community Revitalization Foundation. The ultimate goal of it is our charter's mission shall be that the foundation shall use the funds contributed by Roseburg for the revitalization of Weed, California, with oversight of the management and use of such funds for that purpose by the District Attorney and/or his or her representative. I'm pleased to announce that on February first of 2026, one million dollars will be placed into that charitable contribution by Roseburg, and will place in one million dollars every February first thereafter until February first of 2032. I am also happy to note that in those negotiations and discussions, I was able to tentatively earmark the first one million dollars for the reconstruction and repavement of Main Street. So we're hoping that we can get that together, and with Chris, I know he's already started to work on that, so I'm very pleased to announce that's an additional seven million dollars for the city of Weed.
Of course. I'd like to express our sincere gratitude to the District Attorney's Office as well as to Roseburg Forest Products for their generous participation in helping us revitalize the community. Mayor Protam Palphini?
I'm, I'm going along with Melissa's fact, because I did not attend any meetings on behalf of the city. I would like to say that our, the Resource Center has found a new home up at one fifty-four Bowles Street, right behind Personal Preference. It's a larger building, has very good parking. And it's, it's two stories, but you gotta take the good with the bad, at least for me, anyway. I hate walking upstairs anymore. But we are in the middle of remodeling, not really remodeling, but redecorating, I should say. So anybody wants to stop by, drop by, we do a lot of activities, and we help a lot of folks around town. So, thanks.
Well, I don't have any meeting attendance to report. I would like to give a fond welcome to our new city manager, Dustin Stanbon, and his family, to the community. Just the last couple of weeks working together, I've been very excited with your professionalism, education, and moral compass and ethics that you bring to our city. So very glad to have you on the team. You're a great executive, and looking forward to all the things we get to do in the future to strengthen the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
I also would like to invite the community to the Weed Chamber Mixer next Thursday. It'll be at the Community Center from six to seven-thirty. We'll have Matt Klutz here as a guest speaker discussing attracting and retaining talent in the current workforce, which I know is something that a lot of business owners have shared their need for in the community, both in Weed and greater Siskiess County. So would like to invite people to attend that. And that is all that I have for announcements or reports. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The items as agendized, item A by motion, council will consider entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Local one thirty-seven. Item B by motion, council will consider Resolution Number twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five approving salary adjustments for unrepresented employees. Item C by motion, council will consider Resolution Number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five approving the on-call planner pool for fiscal years twenty-five and twenty-six through twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Item D by motion, council will consider Resolution Number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five adopting a reinspection policy and fee. Item E by motion, council will consider approving minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Item F by motion, council will consider approving payment warrants dated August eighth, twenty twenty-five, including any voided warrants and manual-issued items totaling one million two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eight cents. And item G by motion, council approve and file a month-end report for August twenty twenty-five. Before we move, move on with the consent agenda, our City Attorney would like to make a statement regarding item B.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, with respect to item B, there was a revised salary schedule that has been provided to the public at the back and to the council and the staff, so that will be the proposed salary schedule for adoption. In addition, under the Brown Act, we are required to provide a oral summary of recommendations regarding local executive salary changes, and that includes department heads. So under item B on the consent agenda, in addition to salary changes for non-department head, unrepresented, the proposal for the department heads is a ten percent increase to Public Works Director, Finance Director, Fire Chief, and City Clerk, and a twenty percent increase to the Police Chief, so that their top step monthly salary would be nine thousand two hundred and sixty for all of them, save the Chief of Police, which would be ten thousand one hundred and two. So that is the oral summary of the recommendations on local agency executives under item B.
And this is a long overdue item that gets us close but not quite comparable to other cities in our area, fortunately. But, all right, are there any discussions amongst council on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Public comment?
Do we have any public comment tonight on the consent agenda? All right, seeing as there is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to presentations. First, I'd like to begin with the proclamation honoring past council members. First one that I will read here was for Councilmember Calvin Vanderhoof, whereas Calvin Vanderhoof and her husband Dale relocated to Weed, California in the early nineteen eighties, and whereas Calvin Vanderhoof served the citizens of Weed, being appointed to the City Council in nineteen eighty-six, and whereas Calvin Vanderhoof was re-elected to the Weed City Council in nineteen eighty-eight, and served until January of nineteen ninety-two, serving as the Weed City Mayor in nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-one, and whereas Calvin Vanderhoof worked tirelessly for the HIV/AIDS Foundation of Siskiess County, educating the public, and whereas Calvin Vanderhoof volunteered for years at the Siskiess Food Assistance, and whereas Calvin and her husband Dale owned Black Feather Kites, they designed and constructed kites and flew them all over North and South America. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the City Council of the city of Weed does hereby honor Calvin Vanderhoof for her years of dedication and service to the citizens of Weed. And I have a second proclamation to read tonight, and this is giving honor to Stacy Green, whereas Stacy Green grew up in Weed, California, and was a proud alumnus of both Weed Elementary School and Weed High School, and whereas Stacy Green relocated to the Bay Area for higher education, returning to Weed to take care of his parents, Jesse and K.L. Green, and whereas Stacy Green was appointed to the Weed City Council in two thousand twelve, and whereas Stacy Green served his community from December of two thousand twelve through November of two thousand twenty-two, serving as Mayor Protam in two thousand twenty-two, and whereas Stacy Green served as the Minister of Music at the Wayside Church of God in Christ. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Weed does hereby honor Stacy Green for his years of service and commitment to the citizens of Weed. All right, our next presentation is from Ron Dickens from the Measure O Committee Chair to present the Measure O Committee recommendations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six. Council will consider Resolution Number twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five approving the budget adjustments for the recommended Measure O allocations, and consider entering into agreements with Weed Recreation and Parks Department and Weed Family Resource Center, providing senior services to Weed seniors through the Measure O tax allocations.
First, I'd like to thank Sam Reduki for the great job.
Before we move into this, if I, if I can interrupt, just, we did have a disclosure that the Mayor Protam needed to make.
Yes, first of all, I am the president of the Siskiess Community Resource Collaborative, which also operates the Family and Community Resource Center of Weed, and so I'm not gonna, I just want to disclose it. I don't have any monetary value in that, other than a lot of work. So I just needed to disclose that to the public, and we have one other.
Well, and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Dickens, we, we didn't discuss this previously, but if possible, what we would like to do is to first discuss the Recreation and Park District request.
Okay.
Because Councilmember Vierasan has, has a conflict with respect to the other item, which she will be disclosing when, when we get to that item. Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'd like to talk about Weed Recreation Parks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I guess you can also talk about anything other than the resource, the Family Resource Center. So if you wanted to talk about the Police Department, the Fire Department-
Family Resource Center, I have under a separate item.
Perfect, perfect.
Yep. Well, Weed Recreation Parks is one of five agencies or departments that came before us on the twenty-fifth of August. You have a summary, I think, before you. I would just like to say one thing, that as the O Committee, I was unanimously selected as chair, mainly because I think everybody thought I was retired, and I could, you know, fill in. We had a vigorous discussion, but there was unanimity amongst us to approve all of the budget items. I had a couple of questions, a couple of reservations. Conversation for seniors, I'm a senior, I'm going on eighty-six, the only conversation I wanted was on the golf course. So I, anytime I see a dime spent, I want to know where the dime's going. That's simple. All right. That being said, you have copy. I'll try to answer anything I can. I will, I will say this. The people who presented on the twenty-fifth did try to use due diligence anticipating rising costs in the areas of fuels, insurances, and foodstuffs. Okay. Fair, right? Any questions?
At this point, no.
I do, Mr. Chair. Are any of these funds for wages? My understanding, you're talking about Weed Recreation now? Yes. The only possible wages would be administrative overhead? What does that entail? That's a darn good question. I'll be nice. Well, the reason I'm saying and asking, and I'm not saying I disagree with it, is that when I was on the Rec Department, when that building was put up, I was, spoke to a couple of McConnells. They said that, that they would support this, but it had to make its own money, and it wasn't just for wages or for jobs, it was for putting programs together. And in, in the time of a crunch time, I just would like to know what that entails. And I'm not against the Rec Department, so let's not get that all out there. I just would like a little more clarification on where that money is being spent and what it's, what it pertains to.
Mark, if I, Mr. Mayor of May, I did want to remind you that this also pays for van driver salaries-
I saw all that.
-and cell phone, just wanted to make sure.
I did, I saw every bit of it. That was the only question that I had, that all I wanted to know. My understanding is it's an inclusive amount, so it'd be for van drivers and any ancillary fees that may come up during the course of this particular fiscal period. And that's, that's kind of what I read. I didn't know if it's- That was my understanding. -in wages inside that building. In, in the course of the discussion, I know this, no one was ever able to point to Person A, Person B, Person C receiving a salary or stipend. Okay, I just want to keep it up on the up and up, so we all know where, where that, where it's going and what it entails. And that's it. So thank you very much. And I'm a supporter of the Rec Department. Let's make that clear.
Can I just ask for clarification from Jill? This amount of funds that Measure O was re-
This amount of funds that Measure O was reallocating, is this a review from the prior two years, or is this a new set of delegation of Measure O funds?
It's essentially the same services that that we have provided funding for in previous years, there's been some adjustments based on, you know, increasing fuel prices, whatnot. But it's as far as the Parks and Rec and the Resource Center, the funding is for the same the same projects with those entities. Is that, did I, did I answer your question?
I think so, I guess I need it in simpler terms, was this a new pot of money that was being divided, or is this a review of previously divided funds?
So, it's I don't think I'm still fully understanding what you're asking, so we we estimated what Measure O was going to be this year, we we anticipate the funds to be slightly less based on projections from H D L. And so we put out what that amount of funds are, and then the requests are made, the requests for the Resource Center and the Parks and Rec were for funding the same activities.
Okay, I'm guessing I'm asking because when I was on Measure O, we did two years at a time, two fiscal years, and this is only one fiscal year.
Oh, okay, I, I see.
So I'm trying to figure out, was this the second fiscal fiscal year that's been revised, or is this a new standalone fiscal year?
This is a new standalone fiscal year, and let me clarify. Previously, we were on a two-year budget cycle, and per my request, we are not going to do that anymore, it doesn't make sense to me. I think we need to do a budget every year, I don't see how we can project out it for two years, what we're we're going to need. So, we are not doing a two-year budget cycle, but that would be why it was on that cycle previously, this is for one year.
Okay. And then, Ron, if I could ask you a couple of questions, was there anything that the Weed Fire Department that they asked for that was not going to be funded?
No, as a matter of fact, the Weed Fire Department, the original request was for twenty-one thousand, and they amended it downward to nineteen thousand four hundred and seven.
Okay.
And so, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
They wanted to purchase six radios, and I I wish Brian were here, because he explained it very well. But the radios would serve to enable people in the field to communicate on a broader level with other personnel in the field. And the way I understood it, the people in the Police Department and the people in the Fire Department could communicate more easily in an emergency.
Okay, and so they were provided all the funding to be able to do that?
This is what they requested, yes.
Okay.
If I might just.
There was nothing with them, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to add, per what Brian has said in in the meeting was that these were, they've already partially upgraded their radios, this was the last block of radios, they needed to make them to be completely upgraded to the current system. So that that would make them complete with this request.
Was there anything in the Fire Department that was, I mean, the Police Department that wasn't fully funded?
In the Police Department, Counselor, all they asked for was a approving the third year of a five-year commitment to their contract for cloud storage.
Okay.
And I, I, I didn't even think about it. We always approve pretty much what the Police Department wants, because it's always reasonable and to the point.
And then my last question was, is I saw that there was a recusal on the Weed Rec and Park District, was that based on?
Alan Shoemaker is a member of the board.
Gotcha.
I asked him in the voting to recuse himself, so that there would be no problem presenting this to you tonight. That's why.
Thank you.
And to answer, to go forward on something else, when you were Chair, the fiscal year anticipated funds from Measure O, I believe it was three hundred and forty-six thousand. And this year, it is, it has been forecasted at three hundred and eighteen thousand, which is a shortfall of about twenty-eight thousand. And so, we pretty much asked everyone who presented to cross Ts and dot Is.
And I
We had no problems with the Police Department and the Fire Department.
And I do have to say, from working with the members of the Measure O Committee, I did have the ability to serve with them, and they certainly looked at making sure that every single cent went to the residents of Weed, and that they were asking the appropriate questions for budgeting, and it does appear that they did the same thing this go around, and Ron was there with me last time, so I know he was there with his calculator, making sure that this worked. So, thank you for, thank you for still participating, Ron.
As, as a matter of fact, recall, I was looking at the legality of the commission that we received, and the way it was worded, and I reminded everyone, Melissa finished law school, I only did one year. I decided to be a college teacher and high school teacher, so, anyway, moving on. So that is the reason for the recusal, Alan had to recuse himself, but he did participate in the debate. And you know, I I asked about coffee and conversation for seniors, but anyway, we won't go. I just want to keep everything lively, moving on. I guess the last item is Weed Public Works, did we talk about that one?
We have not yet.
Weed Public Works, we're, we approved a purchase for a ground penetrating radar. My question to the person presenting was, is this going to save Weed money in the future? Because lord knows, small community, and how many times have our power gone out? My understanding, and I have a photo if anybody would like to see this little monster, it looks like something George Lucas would come up with, anyway. It will penetrate the ground and determine where lines of power and gas exist, so that we don't excavate them mistakenly. And they asked for twenty thousand dollars. And we thought it was a good investment for the City of Weed. The only caveat we made, Alan Shoemaker and myself, made this caveat, because of its expense, and because of its technological nature, we asked that anyone who uses the equipment, and anyone who oversees the use of the equipment, ensures that the equipment is lodged carefully and securely each evening after use, and that the people using the equipment know what they're doing. And that was the only demand we made, and they agreed. So, any questions on that one? Okay, the last item then is the Siskiyou County Community Resource Collaborative. And this was a very vigorous debate.
So before we get to this one,
Sure.
Councilor Verison, this is when you would explain your conflict and recuse yourself.
Yes, so my restaurant has the honor to been cooking for the senior for the last eight months or so, and for that token, I will have to recuse myself from.
Okay. I can, I will preface any discussion we have with this remark. Everyone on the O Committee, and Melissa can vouch for this. We vigorously support any program that supports seniors, period. I mean, I made, I make jokes about coffee and conversation for seniors, but that's kind of joking. All joking aside, anything that supports seniors, we're for. We listened very, very carefully. There was a vigorous discussion regarding Meals on Wheels. And our city to the south, our sister city to the south, seems to usurp many of the I don't want to, I wouldn't, would say goodwill of the City of Weed in the areas of supplying food for seniors. And that's being looked into. But we, we saw no reason to not support the the amount requested by the Resource Collaborative Family Community Centers. Now, the facilities, and I can just refer to it, the new building facility used to be meals, supplies, and materials, they're going up. Everything's going up. Contract services and vaccination clinics. They asked for fifteen hundred dollars, now, given the new CDC guidelines that are coming out of Washington, D.C., I don't know what sort of impact this will have, but I believe they said there were two or three people receiving shingles vaccines. And I believe those are given in writing only. So, that amount is a little bit high, but it may go higher. So the total amount requested of eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-four, excuse me, looks like a great deal, but when you listen to the, when you listen to the possibilities of new costs going up, it's difficult to anticipate. So, I believe our total fiscal impact for Measure O was what, one hundred and ninety-two thousand? Three fifty-one?
I would say that you guys did a lot of miracles with the, with that budget, actually. If any of the council members have questions as to the expenses, I'd be more than willing to sit down, you got, I don't know if you want to sit through it on the, on the DS here, but you're right, we try to keep costs at a very minimum as far as physical items, including labor. Most of the cost increases are all food related. There's not much we can do. Pet here, most of the vendors, including Pet and everyone else, because we use about five different vendors.
Yes.
All do it, if you can believe it at bare bones, but it is still, even at bare bones, expensive.
There's a stain.
Yes.
More additional costs, and fuels and maintenance on vehicles is going up. And the suppliers that supply these meals have to look at those additional costs when they supply the meals. So I mean, it's a huge conundrum, I, I don't, I don't know the answer.
And we are constantly, I would tell you, we're constantly looking for funds, but most pools of money are dedicated, and I think, I hope our E D explained all of that, but P S A Two sends money in a certain direction. Siskiyou Food Assistance has a, has a direction, and all of the entities have a direction where it's, it's kind of pre-established. Meals on Wheels is another one that is, they do reach all communities, but it is the funding, I'm going to tell you right now, is going to be scrunched, is, in my opinion, because it is federally based program, so.
Yes, it's going to suffer.
Yeah.
And somewhere you have to pick up the slack. And that's why I didn't see this as unreasonable at all.
But I do thank you from the Siskiyou Resource Collaborative, Steve's not here, he's up at an event in Medford. But there's a list in front of every council member about some of the stuff that a program does. How many seniors we serve, and everything that's out there. So, it's a one-of-a-kind event in Siskiyou County, and we've managed to pull this off for several years now, so, again, thank you very much.
Ken, you might be able to answer this for me, the Siskiyou County Community Resource Collaborative, are they the ones that do the food service in Waireka?
No, that's Madrona, I believe.
And the, I know that there was some squabble over this, and I was just wondering if it got worked out, that program coordination, planning, and administration of twenty-one thousand dollars. Is that a divided number for the total coordination, planning of the collaborative?
Yeah.
Actually, that serves, there's two people
Yep.
that are paid individuals that work that.
Yep.
I think it's from roughly ten to three o'clock.
Yep.
And because we have to have somebody present, it also includes four hundred dollar, I think it's a hundred dollars a lunch to the community center. And it pays for administrative costs, which means making phone calls to people, you also have a tree that calls people if they haven't shown up. I will tell you who's passed away in the neighborhood, at least in the senior level, almost all you gotta do is every Monday, show up, and after a while, you know who's present, who's not present, and you start asking questions. And so you find out what's going on. It keeps, it keeps tabs on our seniors really well.
But it is an inclusive fee.
So I, I see here in this document that the average senior served has increased from eighty to ninety-five per meal. Do we have, are we having more people age into the program locally in the City of Weed, more people, seniors moving to the City of Weed? Where's that number coming from?
I don't know that, I can't answer demographics for you. I do know that we have more and more, as it was explained to me, if this service was not provided, there would be seniors in Weed who would starve.
And that's alarming, put to me.
It is a very alarming comment, yes.
We did, excuse me, we did ask for some data on how many seniors that are receiving services that aren't within the the Weed City limits, that are maybe from another community, and I think the prevailing number was about ten percent are from Lake Shastina, they're not within the city limits.
They donate about half of the cost to their meal, so it does reduce that. And, and those, those funds are utilized to buys, to reduce other areas over here in, in the documentation, so I don't, I don't know if he's put it down or not, I didn't make this up, but the usually we get about five dollars a head for those that are from Shastina, it's probably, actually, we get them from Shastian and Hammond's. Both within the nine-six-zero-nine-four zip. I don't know how that reflects on the tax base, I don't know how that's divvied up, so that would be more of a question, are we getting funds for nine-six-zero-nine-four? Or is that kind of portioned out, portioned out, or?
Well, Lake Shastina isn't in our tax base. So. If, any, any funds they spend, for instance, at Dollar General out at Lake Shastina, there, there isn't the the Weed District tax on that, they're not paying that, so unless they're shopping right in Weed at the stores here above me, then they're not paying our, our city tax here that a lot of people within the city limits are paying.
Yeah, I would say there's some of that, I don't know, I couldn't break down a number, that was almost an impossible number, but.
So my concern here is, we have comments in the community that some of our seniors would starve without this program.
That person, and I
And
Yes.
I, I don't know, you know, how valid that is or not, but it's a concerning comment to hear, I mean, it comes from somewhere. But the, the question I have is, are there demographics in the City of Weed that are not able to attend? That are not receiving the service? You know, are we serving all of our seniors, or are there seniors who are going without, and if so, why? And I know those aren't things you can answer, because you're here for the Measure O.
Questions.
But that was something I would like to get more information on from the Community Resource Center that's hosting this.
But I think the City, the City of Weed is doing an excellent job.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not leaving anybody behind, if there's someone who needs the services and getting it, that we're aware of those. that we're aware of those demographics and then we can then, whether it's through Measure O or through volunteerism.
And if I learn anything, I'll bring it to you.
To mitigate that, so.
Yep.
I am there about two weekend, two, two days a month. I can't, I don't make it to every single one. I got other things, but I will tell you, based upon appearance, based upon what I see as lifestyle, I would say most people will qualify. I will tell you also that if they're not getting food in weed, they're most likely getting food in Mount Shasta. But this is, this is kind of a, a Siskiyou County issue. Food is a big issue in Siskiyou County. We're do, uh, we're not doing it, but I know the Siskiyou Democrats are doing a big food drive Saturday. And I think they're doing one the following Saturday, and that is for South Siskiyou only. But it's because of that same beast where people are not getting enough to eat.
That, that's concerning for me to hear that. And and it's something that now I'm like, okay, you know, I I wasn't aware of that, and I'm glad that was brought up, but Mr. Chair, I'm not, and that is concerning. So us as as human beings and and not just in our city, we need to see what we can do to kind of help that out. There's gotta be some other things.
It doesn't include, we still have Great Northern gives, has a food pantry giveaway thing. Uh, Siskiyou Food Assistance has one. We have an emergency food pantry at our resource.
To these places. That's my biggest concern, is that if, you know, if they don't have family or friends, or they don't know about the van and picking up and going, that that their information is out there, so these people don't go without food, because this, I've seen some things in this, in the grocery store that I set me back a little bit. I can see what they're affording to buy, you know, and that bothers me. And 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 I tried to do the right thing, and that was not a good thing at that particular time to do, because that person was offended by it. Appreciated it later, but was offended that I stepped up here all, you know, and that, and that was one of the things that is kind of yeah, that's a concern for me.
Definitely something that we can look into separately um, with the the entities involved, but sorry to derail your presentation there.
No, we also, we also do keep a
No.
calculation of everybody that comes in, they have to check in.
Do a good job.
So we, we know how many people we're serving.
Yeah.
So David, should we take vote on the portion that pet is recused from first or?
No, we, since we only have one resolution for the entire decision, then we'll just have to make, you'll have to make a decision without pet, without council member ears.
Well.
Well, Mr. Dickens, do you have any more to report? I don't know, like, we kind of cut you off with questions there.
No, I'm sorry.
I mean, what, if you, I guess, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I guess the one option would be to bring her back if you wanted to discuss specifics of of changes to any of the allocations other than this this Family Resource Center. So she can have input on that. Um, and then she'd have to recuse herself again, and then you guys can take action on the entire uh, package.
Well, I think everything's been presented very clearly and questions asked and answered. Are there any other questions from the council in regards to the Measure O proposal?
My other question is, is, is Resource Center is a big benefactor here. Should I recuse? I know I don't have to. At least three. Nearly a hundred percent.
That's, um, you know, the, I don't, there's no legal conflict because you're, you do not have a financial interest, since you're a non-compensated board member, and under the rules uh, related to remote and non-interest under Government Code ten ninety regarding contract formation, there's a, an exception for non-compensated board members who are sitting on a a nonprofit that is performing a duty delegable by the city. So essentially, um, it's performing services that the city could otherwise perform. So in that, because of that, that only requires disclosure, but it doesn't require recusal. Of, obviously, there's the common law conflict of interest provisions that are judge made, and there are your own um, personal decisions regarding perception and what the community can handle. So those are, those are in, those are your decisions to make. Um, I don't think it's going to uh entail legal risk for the city if you uh participate in the decision regarding the senior center.
Okay.
I do have one other question for Ron, since he didn't run away.
I thought I just saw him.
On the senior lunch program, um, is that one hundred percent funded by the city of weed, or is there another funding source?
Uh, let me see. Yeah, I'm going through my notes here. Key program outcome, you'll cost eleven dollars per person.
A hundred percent.
Outreach throughout the year.
It's one hundred percent.
I think it's one hundred percent.
Yeah. That's, that's part of, part of the issue when we went to get the, the vote was for senior services. So that was kind of one of the requests the seniors made, the city of weed was they wanted social activities, they wanted transportation. So originally, those two groups in particular, the seniors actually, and we had the library, and I can't forget the library. Those groups are what pushed this. We, we, it flew through. I mean, so that's kind of the uh, the impetus behind it. So if we could find other sources, we can do that, but that's not easily done in today's uh, environment. We're always looking for funds, but it's a constant. But I'm pretty sure it's a hundred percent. I don't, I don't think Steve presented anything other than it's this.
It is one, one hundred percent from the city of weed.
The only breakdown we got, the, under meals, supplies and material, and you were kind of asking that. Forty-eight thousand of the fifty-six thousand one hundred and sixty that's included in meals, uh, forty-eight thousand goes to actual meals. And this could rise. You alluded to it in your comments about going to the market. Anyone goes to the market, you'll see it. Eight thousand dollars of the fifty-six thousand and change they asked for is for supplies and materials. Uh, those are going to go up. If you've been to Walmart lately and looked at some of those things, so as I say, I I think the people did diligence as far as coming up with uh, anticipating as much as they could what inflated costs would be, but uh.
I think with that said, it's a, was a very wise choice to go to an annual budget, because if we did a two-year budget, we certainly would have a budget shortfall next year, so.
Very possible.
I would add that, that we did have a discussion um, just for future that, that um, the Resource Center and Parks and Rec be open to looking at other funding sources instead of automatically assuming that they're going to be a hundred percent funded from the city of weed, because I know there are some um, uh, some other resources out there. I don't know. I I know that funding may, may not be um, as high as it has been in the past, but but we did have that discussion
Right.
about, about being open and and not automatically assuming that, that they're going to be a hundred percent funded by weed to be open to other funding sources.
I think that goes for any community service nonprofit in our community or any community is to be looking for all the sources of support you can get, because.
And they're going to be in short supply, I think.
And the other unfortunate part is, is, you know, we're, we're dealing with dividing money between the library and senior citizens, and we've been pressuring the library to get a five oh one C three to be able to start a funding stream for them. And so it's difficult for me to balance in my head why equal pressure would not be put on a similarly situated organization receiving money from Measure O. And it's a difficult situation because I see it on the opposite hand as well. And that is, I do believe these seniors need these meals, and if we are one hundred percent going off of city funds, knowing what direction our city budget is going in, I'd like them to have a fail-safe to make sure that those meals are there if Measure O can't deliver or the city can't deliver, just based on the way that the budget goes, so.
I, I think I, I will, I will tell you this, is that we can, we can, as a nonprofit, you can search different sources. But each source that you get for funds has specific, what we call deliverables, okay? You're doing computers, you're doing children, you're doing seniors, doing senior lunches. Every program, the deliverable for this meal here, the deliverable is the lunch and the activities. We've been fortunate enough to get in some freebies here or there from county health or from behavioral health. But those are specific activities outside of the food issue. As soon as you go to food, you have to find a nonprofit willing to give you money for specifically for food. And some might be specifically for senior foods. I'm not saying it's impossible, but I'm just wanting everybody to be aware of that. These are, these are little, little slots that you have to push yourself in all the time. And so occasionally we, we come across funds, but then we can't use it for this, we can't use it for that. Same way with PSA two has a certain specific allotment for funds. Great Northern does the senior food for fun, not food, but the commodities for, for specific, Siskiyou Food Assist- Assistance has another one. Again, it's, it's, I just, not saying you're right or wrong, I'm just saying that that there are slots that everything has to fit in. And once you sit there long enough and on some board, you're, you're, half the time my head is swimming in acronyms on who's giving money and who's not giving money, or who, who backed funds or whatever, so.
And I don't think anybody up here is, we've established that we need to make sure that the seniors are young, they have to have food. I don't think that's a discussion. I think if we can get more income or different ways of bringing it in.
Well, there's other ways.
Doors on different, different sides to.
We've done a couple times where
And you do a good job.
No, no, where the people are failed to, we get a, a calendar date was off or something like that, like I did today when I came in for a meeting. We've stepped up and made a meal, all the workers in there, I just went, went shopping at uh, grocery, I had a raise and made a quick grocery list, and it was chicken salad, or actually salad and chicken on top, so not chicken salad.
I, yeah, and I appreciate.
And maybe we have to do some more of that, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the board and Measure O, um, I'm just looking for future and even-handedness, and I, I know in dividing those numbers in Measure O, it's extremely difficult um, to do, so it's with hesitancy on that, that feeling of being equal to the library and to all these other programs that um, I think Measure O did the best that anyone could ask for, and so I would make a motion to adopt the Measure O funding as is.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor that we adopt uh, Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-two, five approving the budget adjustments?
Public comment.
Apologies, uh, do you have any further public comment?
None. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for, you and then the rest of uh, your group at Measure O for the work you've done to put this together. It's appreciated.
We made you earn those big bucks tonight.
Yeah, I'll go spend them on the golf course. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
To clarify, it's comments from the public, not from the Measure O.
Yes, yes, and there were no public comments. Um, we'll offer a second time if there's any public comment on the uh, resolution. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See you.
All right. All in favor of adopting Resolution number twenty-nine, twenty-two, five?
Aye.
Aye. Give me a post.
Staying with, I hear three, so I'll abstain.
So we have uh, three ayes and then abstention, motion carries, and we will now bring back our recused council member to move on to council business.
I want to thank you guys.
We just wanted to make, we just wanted to make this wet. We just wanted to make this wet.
I know you guys do. I, I, I do, I thought about it, and I think about it every year. How can, the only thing I can think of that's easy, if you fix one meal a month, that would curve off.
All right. Now we're on to council business. Item A, League of California Cities, Council will consider appointing Melissa Wetstein as the voting delegate and ask for nominations for voting delegate alternate for the League of California Cities in Long Beach, October eighth through October tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to uh.
Mayor of Staff report.
Um, yeah, pretty, pretty simple. Um, Melissa cleared her schedule and is able to attend. Um, she will be attending with our new city manager. They're both going down, so we're just looking to see if there is a voting alternate that's interested. If not, I'll let you uh, nominate Melissa.
Do we have anybody on the council that shouldn't be an alternate?
Uh, I'm not going, so I don't, it'd be tough to be an alternate unless you want to call. Can our city manager be an alternate? Is that allowed?
That's a good question.
Is, is someone?
I don't believe so. I think it has to be an elected official.
Is Dustin going to knock me off while we're traveling down there? I, I'm a little concerned.
No.
Is someone anticipating that I'm not going to make the vote?
Let's not go down that.
Oh, my God.
All right. Not all elected officials are as reliable as you.
That's what happens when you got a prosecutor up here, right? I assume the words.
All right, well, seeing as we have no alternate delegate, um, I entertain a motion to appoint Councilmember Wetstein.
I saw a move.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? No? All right. All in favor of appointing Councilmember Wetstein as our voting delegate?
Can I oppose?
Aye.
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 Too late now, you're talking.
All right, motion carries. We will now move on to staff reports. Fire Chief Carter was unable to join us this evening as he is participating in the stair climb for the September eleventh memorial. Um, so we, we thank him and his team for, for doing that. Uh, do we have a report in lieu uh, for the fire department?
Uh, Mayor, that's we have.
Oh, I apologize, I.
The urgency item, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So our urgency item that we added, Resolution number thirty, twenty-two, five, electing uh, cease to be subject to the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act with respect to recognized employee organization. So we'll move on to staff reports for that.
This is, I appreciate you for allowing this to be on the agenda. It was, I had a group of people come, come into my office last minute and say, hey, we kind of need this to carry out our contract and our vote, so I was, I was just thankful that people at the state were able to help me and I was able to get it done, but they, it essentially removes Public Works employees uh, from our CalPERS, and they will be going through Teamsters one, three, seven moving forward, starting January first.
Right. And I believe that was a unanimous uh, vote from the Public Works employees represented by Teamsters to do so.
That is correct.
Any questions from the council?
I, just for public edification, it's my understanding that this change is actually a savings to the city.
That question did come up from CalPERS and uh, the what, the Teamsters rep reported to me, the main concern was cost. They had get a, they get a bet, they get a lower cost through the Teamsters plan. They had get a, they get a bet, they get a, uh, lower cost through the Teamsters plan.
So better for our employees, better for our city.
That's the way I understand it. That's the way they voted, so.
Win-win.
Excellent. Do we have any public comments on the item? No? I'm, I'm thankful we have a public tonight, even though there's no comments, so. All right. I'll entertain a motion for. Accepting resolution thirty dash twenty-two-five.
Also a move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, on adopting resolution thirty, twenty-two-five as our urgency item. Uh, now we'll go back to staff reports. Um, do we have a report for the fire department in lieu of the chief being absent?
It is in your email, Mister Mayor.
Okay. So I'll, uh, advise our council, read the emails for reports. I don't have my laptop with me tonight, so.
Do we get to announce he's fire chief now?
I was planning to do that.
Yeah, that'll be part of our city manager's staff report. All right, Director Porterfield.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Director Davis.
So the water line on terrace is gonna get replaced, uh, next week. Um, with brand new connections. That was due to some pressure issues that they were having. And we cannot figure it out, but the grant, um, the current grant that for the current project will be covering, it's just to change order. Um, we are also flying our open position, um, through personal preference. So if someone has a commercial license and they're interested, they go to personal preference to apply.
All right, and I, I do have a question for you, uh, Director Davis. Did you receive a start date for the roof? Rehabilitation from our contract?
No, not yet. Um, I tried reaching out to them today, but they were traveling and without, with some poor cell service. So it wasn't very successful, needless to say. Um, I am kind of hoping to hear from them either tomorrow or Monday.
Excellent. I'm glad we, I watched the portion of me that I missed from last month, and I'm glad that that's moving forward. So it's. Much needed to keep our building upright.
Yes.
And do we have any numbers for the city street?
I got some.
I see you pointing and a smile on your face, so I'm hoping that's good.
Yes.
Great.
However you worked at?
Huh?
I was gonna go get with, um, you guys after this and get the numbers.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Sergeant Comperance.
Uh, nothing to report.
I have a question for the police department. Are you gonna apply for city funds to do RIMS integration?
That is a good question, um. That is a good question. I honestly don't know that answer.
Can you ask the chief to?
I will ask him, uh, next week.
Awesome.
All right, our city clerk.
Just publicly, uh, staff, welcome our new city manager. We appreciate him coming aboard. We kind of have welcomed him, maybe hazed him slightly. Um, but, um, I, I think, I think he feels like part of the family, so just welcome Dustin. Thank you very much.
All right, and on to our city manager.
Well, first, council and staff, thanks. And the people of weed, thank you. It's an honor to be here. You all have been very welcoming to me and my family and I, and we're, we're really appreciative of that. Thank you for the honor and for trusting me with your staff and your resources. I'm honored. Uh, the one report I have is, along with Melissa's hint, I promoted. With David's help and with staff and every one of you recommending him that I talked to, we are, uh, you have, you now have a fire chief.
Thank you.
So Brian is now Chief Brian.
Excellent.
That's cool.
Other than that, I got nothing to report, Mister Mayor and council.
Did they swarm you when you walked through the door?
Sure.
I have one question on that. Is there gonna be a swearing in for him or anything?
Well, we did do a swearing in, uh, at, at this afternoon. We do have pictures and she decided to torture me with that too, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Sandy.
I, I do have, uh, sorry, one other, um, report. Uh, before you, you have a map. Um, there are some. Green addresses here. These are the permitted short-term rentals that the Planning Commission has, um, given the green light to. There is one in yellow. That's an application I received. I received another application today. Um, so the Planning Commission has requested that council consider, um, putting a cap on the number of short-term rentals that the city permits. So if you guys can just review this, um, in your own time and then give direction to staff at a later date.
Thank you. With our housing crisis, lack of housing thereof here, not just in weed, but Siskiyou County in general. Um, I can understand the Planning Commission's request for a cap, so. All right, our city attorney.
I will see council member Wetstein and city manager Stan Ba in, uh. In Long Beach, and I think we may need to discuss the possibility of moving. Uh, the next meeting, given that it overlaps with the, with the conference. So that may be something that I think the city manager will be, uh, or the city clerk will be reaching out to you about. But we'll see.
All right.
Currently, yeah, currently the, the current date for the regular meeting is the same day as the. As the conference, so you'll be missing your city manager, your city attorney and one of your council members. No, that'll be something, if, if they, if the mayor and the city manager decide that it's, it's something that needs to be moved. Then, uh, the clerk will reach out to you for, with dates.
So what dates are you not available? Oh, all right, well.
And, uh, I think I'm. Oh, oh, wait.
All right.
I think what we'll do is what we, our normal process, we'll pull the council members individually and, um. City manager and I will work to make sure that we can get a schedule that accommodates everybody.
Fair enough.
All right, that's it for council business. Um, and staff reports, now we are on to item eleven, which is the adjourned to closed session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to.
We do need to take public comment on that one as well.
And I, I appreciate the, um, initiative from the council members tonight. Do we have any public comment on closed session? Um, so we do have a question from the audience. I'll repeat, so it's on the microphone, um, uh, when the public would know when the next meeting would be. Um, I'll let the city clerk speak to that because that's, uh, her expertise, but I, I know that there is a requirement for public posting of meetings. Regardless of whether it's regular or special schedules, so.
When we decide if we're moving it and when we choose a date, Will.
Right, but, uh, what is our posting, the?
Special meetings are twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours, and then normally for a regular meeting, we post seventy-two hours ahead of time, okay.
If she's gonna be on the agenda, are we gonna notify her?
Or is?
I have contact information.
Yeah, and, and members of the public can request to receive, um, the agendas when they're posted. So that would be an option. And that, you, you pass for.
I know the agendas are posted to the website as well as physically here on the building doors. Um, I'm not sure if there's any other locations, but it's all publicly accessible and, um, we can. Always come to our local public library to access the internet if you need to access the website and you don't have web services at home, so. All right, any other public comment before we go to closed session?
May I make one more comment? Services for Stacy Green are Saturday at twelve to. I'm not sure when, but it starts at twelve. Don't be late. Yeah.
That's in Mount Shasta, correct?
It's at Mount Shasta Memorial Chapel, yes, at the cemetery.
All right, any other announcements or public comments? I have, uh, one motion to adjourn to closed session. We've got two seconds. All in favor? Aye, and we are, and all posts, we are adjourned to closed session.